Okay, welcome everyone to our workshop called the Meeting to Order. Start off with we have a resolution fifteen dash two nineteen authorizing budget adjustments. We do this frequently, well not frequently, occasionally. Everything's here, all the information is here, moving line items from in our budget to other line items to where there's access to where money's needed, relocating the funds versus from the Justice Court to the Police Department for requesting Judge Castella for equipment purchase. Second group is to use medical insurance savings from server rack upgrade, roof repair, firehouse and village hall, additional insurance premiums and other miscellaneous expenses. That was from removal highway and a list of things. And third, to transfer funds from professional services for approved course, a firehouse and evaluation of the street wall. So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution fifteen dash two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Vlade?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes. Second is authorize mayor to sign CCTV service agreement with managed technologies. Somebody would like to make that motion?
So I move to authorize the mayor to sign the CCTV service agreement with managed technologies. A second.
Discussion. Does anyone know of the... What's that? I do not either.
No.
I don't know. Is this Anthony's mutual contract?
Well, this is, this is, right, Fran is right, this is the June first. And it started June first, two thousand eighteen. So this is the second time we're seeing this and it's a seven percent yearly increase.
Does this include the best web email?
No, no, this is the closed circuit television.
Oh, oh, right, gotcha, okay.
So we have a motion which is being seconded.
Do we have a second? Does everyone feel I'm gonna rely on other folks for this?
Yeah.
You got both of them, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, a request by Hopson Hudson to rent municipal lot thirty eight spots on Saturday, June twenty ninth, eight AM to seven PM. Marie has done kind of spreadsheets or has come up with numbers for the last couple of years. So Marie?
Yep. John is, John Scher is proposing to pay four hundred and eighteen dollars if I remember, four hundred and seventeen to four hundred and eighteen for the full day from six A, around eight AM to seven PM. That is approximately what we do on our best days. So it seems like a fair number. Bless you, I would recommend we, bless you, I recommend we accept his proposal.
Can I, I have an issue with this only because there are businesses in the area that depend on that parking lot too. So if we could give John twenty eight spaces and then leave ten available because it doesn't really have customers that pop there, you know.
I don't know how we do that.
I don't, can we rope off an area or give them certain numbers?
And if those people are there first, then...
I mean, I know it's only until seven PM, but you know, it's, it's bad enough that, you know...
We're having a discussion.
Local businesses are going to be losing some business, but if he has people coming to the restaurant, then they can't find parking places.
Yep.
So I don't know if we can limit, my proposal is that we give you twenty eight spaces and not thirty eight, in consideration of the fact that there's other businesses in the village that may want, you know, that may need.
I didn't imagine.
Well, that's what we were just discussing. And so I don't know how.
Oh, well, maybe three rows, maybe there's four, there's how many rows?
Four rows, I think.
Four rows.
Well, there's three rows and some.
Maybe the row closer to the river view would leave open for the public to do something.
But, so leaving them open, that would not give you, I'm not sure, how many there, at least ten, maybe more.
I have time to maybe go visit in the next week, so we don't need to answer right now.
Yeah, I assume, I assume you're gonna have somebody there, anybody, because...
Yeah, I was planning on having somebody there, yeah.
Because, and well, how are they gonna prove that they're coming to your event?
It's mostly gonna be the brewers or the food people. It's not gonna be really anybody, it's actually really for the people like, like the stars of the festival. Really, the brewers, yeah. You know, we need to have a spot.
Well, what if we work something out with you for fee, parking in the highway area? If it's going to be, if that's what it's gonna be for, the people that are working there, with something like that.
We are by ID. We're going on the back.
Right behind the portal.
Oh.
Lot of space there.
Yeah, that might work too.
So we shouldn't block, so these cars are back there too.
Do you know how many spaces you'd need?
We got forty five brewers coming to Cold Spring.
Well, you've also got the, you've also got the eighteen spaces by Mayor's Park.
Correct, in the front there.
Right, and if you're starting at eight o'clock, those are normally open at that time.
Yeah, you know, ten food trucks, three vans, a lot of people coming, so, you know. I've actually also invited all of tourism in Cold Spring, Phillips Town as a guest. They wanna set up a booth. We're not charging them, so like I've been to Russell White's Gardens, Garden Crop, Stone Crop, and I invited them all to come and set up a table and stuff at the festival.
Those who are coming to set up booths, I assume will be there like seven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, gotta be out, set up by, well, they probably come around probably eight or nine, I'm thinking, and I tell them everybody's gotta be out by eleven.
Well, can we, since you don't, we'll work something out if it's limited, but take and give that some thought behind the highway and I will also, and if I'll talk to Bugsy and maybe there's something we can work out there, that way it's kinda, goes to Fran's point, helps you out, we get a little extra money and everything worked out, all right.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's, yeah, okay, but we'll work something out though.
Okay. Thanks for considering it.
Thank you.
And what, if we do reduce the number of the parking, then we're working off your four eighteen for the full thing, so we'll, we'll work.
Oh, okay. Fourteen, four eighteen was the sort of the number?
I'm not sure what you said, four seventeen, four eighteen? What was it that you said to Jeff? You had a number, a four hundred number?
Oh, well, I was just thinking it was eight, like four twenty, I think, like, you know, eight hours.
Whatever, whatever it was. But you would, I think you would also still wanna have somebody at the entrance to the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I would have somebody.
Which might be easier to manage anyway.
It might be.
Okay.
Where all those button trucks are. Right in the beginning of the parking lot, we'll button them, starts to park there.
As the police cars.
There's a lot of open space right there.
There's a lot of room there.
What's that?
There's a lot of room there.
I'll go see Bugsy tomorrow and stop, I'll go down to the highway department tomorrow and just take a look and talk to Bugsy too.
Okay, yeah. And then I'll take, also take a look, I'm sure we can work something out if we have someone back there and people park, you know, someone to direct them to park in a street line, whatever, you know, that guy.
Right.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on from that then. Next is approval removal of street light at Butterfield. I know I went over and took a look, but not at night, it's just...
And I took a look and the difference is that the Butterfield lights are shorter.
They're not there though, yet.
Yeah, they are.
The two are there, no, I thought it was up to the new engines.
I was looking at the new engine, it said not.
New engines.
The one that's not open yet.
Oh, they have the lights there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, they do?
Right.
Oh, I didn't.
And the street light is taller and it's got an arm that projects over the highway a bit. So my concern was that, not my concern, my observation is the current street light provides better illumination of the roadbed, I'm guessing, than would the two, two poles that are on the Butterfield property. So I'm not sure that eliminating the street light is, is a good thing to do.
Are there other street lights on from there to the corner going south or going north?
They're, the streetlights are probably every two to four hundred feet. So you've got the, you're at the turn there, as you're heading north, there's a turn, if you're coming from the south, I don't, I don't remember where the first street light is in the village.
Did they ask us to remove the light, does that work?
I think they're asking because probably...
Doesn't match their premiums?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because why?
Doesn't match their...
Not aesthetically pleasing, perhaps?
See, he's good at that, huh?
I don't think it's in the way of anything.
It's not in the way of anything, I, my, I'm certainly always interested in saving money, but in this case, I'm wondering if we're sacrificing necessary illumination.
Has anyone else looked at, gone up?
I have, I go by there every night. They have so many lights at Butterfield, the whole place is lit up like an airplane timer. It's, it's kind of hard to imagine that removing one light would really...
But it's a, it's a street light.
I'll take a good look on it on my way home.
Where's the most, where's the southernmost street light on ninety?
Right there at Bank Street.
Okay, so that's probably about two hundred, at least two hundred feet, Bank Street to the, the new entrance.
Okay, I'm gonna table this and could, could you take a look at it, Steve, tonight?
Yeah, I'll do, yeah.
Take a ride up? I'm gonna take a ride up, I didn't look at it, I know where, I looked at the location and looked and saw.
I drive by there every day, but you know, you just kind of, it's just there, you don't even think about it, but I'll take a look on my way home too.
We'll table that also. And we're just tabling everything tonight. The discussion for not-for-profits, this comes from the rec department regarding Mayor's Park and Pavilion, the one, I don't have the fee schedule here, so that would have helped, but that's not in our package. They're recommending only two hundred fifty a day for Mayor's Park and Pavilion, and I think that's way too low, but, so I'd like to table this and we can, I'll have Jeff include in our package next week the fee schedule that they have for Mayor's Park and Pavilion, so we can look at it that way and then discuss it and maybe I can ask, if she'll be here. That's kind of, I should've told Jeff to include that stuff, 'cause they've been waiting for this and, my bad. Next, request the CUC for trustees to review specific chapters of Village Code. Marie is heading this.
So you all received an email from me yesterday identifying the history of the comprehensive plan, the OWRS and the LWRP, and where the code update committee currently is, which is at Phase Five. Phase Five requires review for consistency and clarity and also zoning, zoning map update. I'm not asking you to look for or recommend a zoning map update, however, I am requesting that each of you go through the changes that are being recommended to each of the chapters in the Village Code, including the new chapters, and provide me with any suggestions, comments, errors that you see. I can provide you, as I said in the email, I can provide you the updated chapter in markup form, because I think that's gonna be most helpful. I can get you a hard copy with markup in whatever color, you just need to know, let me know how you want to receive it. And so what I'm looking for is people to review each of the chapters. So tonight, I'd like to know what chapters each of you are going to be willing to review. There are approximately five hundred pages of documents that you, that, that are made up of the chapters that are being, that we're recommending modifications to, in, in the handout that was in the materials that you got. It identifies the number of pages in each chapter, keeping in mind that when you do a markup, the number of pages expands because you've got the old wording and then the markup wording, so things keep getting longer. So, and I'd like to have this completed and returned by you, from you by July first. So what chapters?
So we didn't get that, what you're asking, the chapters?
Yes, it was in the attachment.
They sent it over the holiday weekend.
I printed that out and left it in the bag in the trustee room, I'll put it in the bag.
I honestly didn't have the time to look at it, I had a very good holiday weekend.
We'll give you a leftover.
All the good stuff's been taken.
Marie, the chapter that you said, that you're still working on, which one first do you want us to look at?
No.
To look at that one?
No. Which one?
One thirty-two waterfront consistency review, you said you're still looking?
Uh, no, please go ahead and look at that.
Look at that one too. So you want us to, if there's a total of about five hundred pages, we'll have to do all of our hundred pages each.
Yep.
If I do zone, you're gonna have to carry me?
I, I'm sorry, that's mine, that's mine.
It's all in ten pages.
If anyone else has, like, it's not in our packet.
It's in your packet.
It's in this packet?
No, it's in, it's in what I sent you.
It's in the email.
I know, you just had a problem with recreation, not having it in the packet, and they sent that us into our emails. I had a problem with this, 'cause I didn't, over the holiday weekend, had time to look at this, and I'm not doing it tonight.
I'm a little scared, frankly.
Why what?
I'm a little scared.
He said he's afraid.
Okay.
We'll give you the...
I will, I will send you an email tomorrow morning asking you to respond as to which chapters you're going to review.
That'd be better, 'cause I just wanted, you know, I wanted to pick something great.
So on this list, there's stuff in red and there's stuff in black.
Oh. You need the CCA.
Definitely do.
Which identifies the things that are in red have been modified or recommended modifications. The chapters that are in black have no recommended modification. However, I would like you to review everything because there may be errors in the unmodified chapters. I'd also like you to take a look at things like, you're looking not just for errors, but do you agree with what the code update committee is recommending? That's question number one. Number two, our chapters are a bit antiquated. For example, chapter number one oh one is shopping carts. Do we still need a chapter on shopping carts? Pardon me? Chapter fifty-one is on outdoor furnaces. Outdoor furnaces are devices that are used to generate heat to heat the interior of homes. Do we still need a chapter on outdoor furnaces? Outdoor furnaces are, most of the times I see them, they're out in the North Highlands or outside of the village, do we still need that? Circuses are mentioned in multiple locations in the code. Do we still need to approve or disapprove of circuses in specific zoning districts? It seems to me that's sort of outdated.
Somebody decided to have a circus if we take it out.
So take, take a look at this.
As soon as we take it out.
John, don't listen.
And see whether or not you think that the code needs these topics, that, so for example, the topic, chapter on taxation, one eighteen, appears to have been written when the village was still doing its own assessment for taxes. That is no longer the case, but that chapter goes into significant detail as to how the property of the title is calculated in the determination as to whether or not a couple is eligible for a taxation exemption or not. The way that the town does their taxation is they just ask for the prior year's income tax, and, and they base it on that. Is the amount of the exemption, is, is the amount that the exemption kicks, kicks in good enough, or should we make it higher? Keeping in mind, that was written in nineteen seventy-two, it's forty-seven years later. Keep, this is taxation for people to get exemption from village property taxes. What's a reasonable amount of money as income for someone to qualify for an exemption on village taxes? These are things you should be thinking of when you look at the, the code. So I will be emailing you tomorrow to get your identification of your chapters.
Too early, 'cause I'm not going home and doing this.
But your homework will freak out you tonight.
Not my homework.
I've already got a good list.
My homework's right there. Okay. Moving along, we have accept resignation of Zach Markey, laborer for Highway, another one back to the desk. Anyway, Roy, I think's moving on to Metro North, I believe.
Hard to compete with that, right?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Zach Markey.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Best of luck, Zach. Next, approve advertising for Highway, Department Labor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, sorry, Fran?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, related to that is the decision on, having to have this discussion on employment advertising and the need for that. I, I don't see why, you know, I, we could've had, put an ad in if we didn't, two days ago or three days ago when we had this, so, but we wait because it's the way we've been doing it, and then get approval from the board. So does anyone see a reason why the board has to approve an advertisement of a position?
See no reason why.
If...
If it's...
If it's a laborer position, I don't think there's a need. If you're, if you're looking for to fill a position such as highway supervisor, or what, it's more than I think.
Okay, so is there a way we could word that, so that we can do that?
Supervisory positions?
Yes.
I like that.
Supervisory positions require approval, and anything below that do not.
Do you wanna put that in next, do we have to do that?
Okay, so we make a motion that advertising for, other than supervisory positions, does not require board approval.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Do you have that, Michael?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for that wording. Approval of application to use dioxide to send summer solstice six twenty-two, the request was also a request for a fee reduction, so I guess first is the approval. They've submitted the, the security deposit, they might have, they might have flights with everything so far. There were some questions that Dave Marzal had in his letter, I don't know if you've read it, and some of the things that Marie brought up earlier were good to note, like the timing of some, some things that you couldn't have within the time that we had asked it, like, you know.
The sequencing.
So, we'll have to work on that.
Yes, very useful.
Work on that and adjust those, but that was, that was good also, some things on the site map or maybe more clear what you should put there. So I guess the first is to, to approve the application for the use of dioxide, which...
At the fee of...
Oh, yes. Okay, so I guess, I guess we go to the fee then, which he's asking for a reduction, and if you read his, his letters and Malia's, they were asking reduction to eight hundred and fifty, I believe.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred?
Yep.
And that was from, somehow they had said the double was...
Twelve hundred is in your application, and they're requesting that it be reduced to eight hundred. And they provided a check for six hundred.
What's kind of come to light is on their application, they have that there'll be two hundred people. It's come to our attention that there, I think there will be four hundred or more people possibly there, so, I don't know, thoughts on that?
Are those numbers projected from last year, or does he have that in hand?
I think last year they were two hundred or more last year, and they're projecting the same this year, or, but...
But could be. Here's what I've got, in an email. Darn it, lost it. Anyway, they had two to two hundred and fifty last year, they're telling vendors that they expect four to six hundred people this year. So...
And last year, I believe, state charged on five hundred dollars, so they're kind of basing it on state, and the state is notoriously low.
From what I understand, I think this corresponds with Helling graduation, what's the date of graduation?
June twenty-fourth.
When is it?
Same day.
Oh, it's the same day?
Same day. Helling graduation is the same day, so their, their estimates of how many people they're telling vendors may be high, I don't know if that's gonna make a, you know, a difference to them or...
The graduation is somehow gonna affect that?
Little parents and stuff that might go to this thing.
Parents, families, whatever.
I've got the impression from previous attendees that a lot of them are not local.
It starts at three, so graduation will be completed by then.
Pardon me, sorry.
He's trying to do it all in one day as well, correct?
Yeah, this is a summer solstice thing.
And they did it last year, and according to their letters, they broke even, or is that, whatever.
In his letter, he says, currently the village is asking for fifteen fifty, yet on the application, I'm seeing twelve hundred, so I'm not sure where his numbers are coming from.
So miscellaneous events, including all ticketed events per day, max twelve hours, four hundred dollars.
Right.
He's not asking for additional days for setup, so it comes to twelve hundred dollars.
Right, so in his first paragraph under fee structure, currently the village is asking for fifteen fifty.
And his letter says fifteen.
And then, as he goes on, he says twelve hundred he's asking, I mean, I'm okay with, I like to stick with twelve hundred, but I can go down to a thousand, but I wouldn't go down with more than that.
And then next year would be full price?
Yeah, as long as he knows that you're not gonna negotiate with him over here.
Right, 'cause it's a kind of change in the middle of his plans or...
Well, you know, they announced it and sold tickets for it before they got approval to use to park.
But they knew well in advance, before we, before we finalized the new document, I sent them the draft that we were working on and said, the one thing that's probably not gonna change is the fee schedule, so they knew in advance, enough in advance before they started advertising what, what we were asking.
And this is kind of falling, falling into people who have rented the space from us before for a much, or from the parks before for a much lower fee, and that now we're managing it, the fees are higher, and that's kind of a big pill to swallow from year to year. But I think it's important that people know that we need to generate revenues so that we can develop that piece of property, put in bathrooms, put in water, electricity, you know, the things that people need to make it a more desirable place. This is the only way that we can get that revenue. So, I mean, I know it's, I know it's a big pill to swallow this year, but we're just gonna have to, you know, we fed, we set our fees, these fees are reasonable compared to other places, you know, other than Bosco Bell, but, you know.
Well, they're, you know, they're saying that we set our fee schedule based on Bosco Bell, which is not true.
No.
We did a lot of our fee schedule...
Right, but, but that's, that's what we sent it on, set it on or didn't set it on, is neither here nor there. So it seems as if...
Well, the reason why, just to go back to that, the reason why he brings up Bosco Solstice, 'cause I think it was mentioned at a meeting or that's one of the places we looked at, so then he's comparing that and saying, we can get it for the same, or whatever, so that's where that all comes down.
So it seems as if the central point is, he's, his application says it's twelve hundred dollars, he would like to pay eight hundred dollars, so...
I think the central issue is he thinks that the property, that what we're offering isn't worth the amount of money compared to other places. From, from what I read, and, and that's what I'm reading through his letters, and that's kind of what he's stating, so...
Okay, I, I didn't quite get that, but...
Well, he's saying, you know, he's pointing out there's no bathrooms here, he's pointing out that they have to have porta, they have to have porta-johns, they have to have, there's some water.
There are extra expenses that he has to go through versus Bosco Bell.
Yes.
But for us tonight, the issue is, what are we going to ask him to pay? Are we gonna ask him, are we gonna stick with twelve hundred, are we going to a thousand, or are we going to go to eight hundred? When Hatsumi Opera Expeditions was here three or four weeks ago, it was fifty-five hundred dollars. That would be the required fee for the two nights or three nights, depending upon what it was, and we offered them twenty-five hundred. And they said they wanted two hundred and fifty, and we said, okay, we can't, we can't make a deal. So it's twelve hundred. They're willing to go to eighteen, eight. Do we accept that, or do we say a thousand? Or do we say twelve hundred?
Yes.
I, you know, I think if we're con- you know, this is the second time people have asked for reductions in this. We set up this program so that we can get the revenue to develop that property. I, I think if people want to use it, I, I, I think it sets a really bad precedent for every time somebody comes before us and we're, we're reducing the fees right and left. I mean, we'll, this will never end. I mean, we need that revenue to, to, to make that property better and more desirable.
I don't mind reducing the fee for someone who previously used a block in a much lower rate, but with the understanding that it's being done once as a courtesy because this is, man, it will not be done again. And I would, I would split the difference with him. He's going eight, we're going twelve, and go a thousand, and offer him that.
Yeah, I don't think we'd, uh, apples to apples comparing the kayak person, because we did not anticipate, uh, forty people camping out for two nights and being there three days and what the total would be on that. I, I didn't anticipate that. So asking them for five thousand, fifty-five hundred seemed ridiculous, and we brought that down to half because.
They come back to us?
No.
No. So I'm, I'm good with going to a thousand, and with the understanding that this is not an every year thing, that next year the, the fees are what the fees are.
Which that happened for future. How about the Oktoberfest, then? We talked about increase in prices, we paid fifty dollars last year. I'll be definitely coming back in for an Oktoberfest.
You didn't go to Dockside, you went to Mayor's Park.
Doesn't it make a difference, Dockside or Mayor's Park?
It's not really.
Why, it went fifty dollars up to?
Hold it, John.
It's so confusing. So we, so we've got a thousand dollars, twelve hundred dollars. Steve?
I, before, no, before we go there, I think I was, I was running the meeting, I don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I've kind of lost that a little bit. One, I think the John point is that he can come back, and then where, where, where do we end this, you know? I think the place is worth twelve hundred. If you were down at the wedding this weekend, it's a beautiful place. You have basically at your backyard, it's this incredible view, it's an incredible place to have something. If they, you know, if we're comparing it, or they're saying it's not, you know, up to snuff with other place, other venues, then, you know, I'd say, you know, you'd have, sorry to lose your business, you know, but, you know, we don't have that here. What we have is an exceptional place, it's easy to get to from the, from the train. It, it's definitely, um, the same feeling, the same vibe that you want with something like this, the Ascend Solstice. And, you know, they, they're, they're having vendors coming in, they're selling stuff, they have, uh, bands, they've got musicians, they have, you know, stage that's gonna be set up, they're paying for all of this, and, and, you know, I think it's part of the business. I think it's part of the package that you have to, you know, expect. I don't, it wasn't a surprise that this number was what it was. And I like David and Malia, and have known David forever, my son's best friend, so I, if anybody, I'd love to cut him a break, and, uh, Marzol has done a lot for us at Claudio, so, you know, that's in consideration too. But I think that if we're setting a precedent, or we're renting this place, that I'm, I'm saying we stick with twelve hundred. I'm with, I'm with.
That would be good. Well, I, I, I think we need the revenue, whatever it is.
Right.
On the other side of that too, is if, you know, I mean, they're paying, and he's agreed to pay or whatever, so we're not gonna lose that. That they, they are a business in town, whatever, that's, that should be considered. But, you know, and I think that was in consideration for the kayak people also. Steve, your thoughts?
I don't see what the big difference is, two hundred more dollars if you're going a thousand or twelve hundred in a venue.
So you're good with a thousand, it's a reduction?
That's fine.
Move.
Yep.
Fran?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna go with a thousand on this one.
Okay, Marie?
Thousand. I'll go a thousand.
Okay, I will cave to it now. And, uh, this is for, for Mayor's Park, um.
As, as long as he knows that this is a one-time deal.
Yes.
And the fees.
Going forward, he needs to charge accordingly to get that money.
Yeah, if, if he saw the fee structure in advance, then he's, like, you know, they should have known this.
I probably hadn't.
Wasn't finalized, but they did.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the application for Dockside Ascend Solstice on six twenty-two in the amount of, uh, one thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
We also, just so everyone knows, we have someone that we'll be meeting, yeah. Bruce Campbell is gonna be kind of the greeter and, uh, meet people at the opening of, uh, events, so. We'll have somebody at three o'clock, and, um, I don't think they, they should be allowed in the park earlier than that, since that's what they indicated.
He's under the impression he's gonna get it all done in one day.
Well, if they're advertising the, the, the event's starting at three o'clock, and they're not setting up until three o'clock, that might be difficult.
Wait, what?
I think that's what the assumption is.
Well, you know something, yeah, he's got porta potties coming in also.
Well, vendors are gonna need some time to set up.
Let me.
Not our problem.
No, it is our problem.
I'm sorry.
If he's got porta potties coming in, are they coming in and going out the same day?
Uh, I guess so.
There may be a.
It's not usual. They don't usually come at nighttime to take porta potties.
On Mondays, usually, usually on Monday, then I gotta come on the weekends.
No, they're done.
And I put them out on Friday, then you pick them up on Sunday.
Yeah, unless they're paying time and a half for the driver. Maybe he's gonna storm at his house and drive them one by one.
I mean, he's telling us in his application. So we've got an issue.
Like the Marines.
He's telling us in an application that he doesn't need a setup or breakdown day.
Okay, and what does he have on the application? Do we have the application now?
Yes.
What's it start?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
It ends at nine.
It starts at three o'clock, their advertisement's at two thirty, and they don't need any setup time.
Well, he's gonna need breakdown, he's gonna need a separate breakdown day, because they're not taking the porta potties out of there that day.
And everybody had music tonight.
Yeah, can we just un, unvote this, because?
We didn't vote on it yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Just had motion and a second, but no vote.
But no vote, right, yeah, exactly.
All right, so I'm gonna take back my offer, and I think we need to re, re.
Sorry, we need a new motion.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion, I will, uh, make a motion to resc- well, we didn't make the motion though.
We did, we did make the motion.
You made a motion to approve the application for a fee of one thousand, and Fran seconded.
Okay, since no one voted on that, do we have to rescind the, anything? I don't think.
I don't think so.
Just amend your motion.
So are you guys tabling it?
And, yes, we will amend the motion.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Thank you, thank you, John. Okay, I'd like to amend the motion and make a motion to approve the application for Dockside in the amount of two, of twelve hundred dollars.
Can I, if he needs a breakdown day, that's an additional two fifty.
I think you could get it, he, if it's starting at two thirty, he could be there that day.
Yeah, but breakdown, who's gonna take the porta potties out of there?
Well, porta potties.
Uh, the tents.
I wouldn't be a stickler about the.
Well, he's got tents, uh, he's renting a tent, twenty by thirty. He's got Royal Carding coming in, and he's renting, uh, porta potties, which means that those things are, um, he says twenty by thirty, twenty by twenty, and two twenty by tens. The twenty by thirty will be rented, and the other tents are privately owned, so he's got tents rented, which means somebody's gonna come and unrent it, which is the next day. Somebody's gonna come and take the Carding garbage out the next day, and somebody's gonna come and take the porta potties out the next day.
In the application, Fran, wasn't there a section that said the date for, um, uh, toilet installation, date for toilet removal?
There was.
Date for tent installation, date for tent removal? This is, this is the shortcut.
I thought there was, but in any case, um.
Yeah, there's a good.
Okay, so I suggest that we need an update. If you say that the, the event is stated to begin at two thirty?
Yes, that's, that's what it says right here.
So we need an updated application in addition to.
And also the number of people.
The number of people.
The number of people, and also when vendors are gonna come in, be allowed to come in and set up, because it's unreasonable to expect vendors to come and set up at exactly the same time everybody's arriving.
Okay, I will send them a, an email.
And he also has to understand that if the breakdown is the next day.
Yeah.
That's another two fifty.
So ultimately, after the discussion, no action is being taken, and we're gonna request.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to table the approval of the, uh, application.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, and please, um, tell them we appreciate these comments.
All right, well. Okay, sorry about this. Okay, well, hold business. Uh, I just have a couple of things. Um, we did, I did follow up, um, with the, uh, request from, uh, the seniors, uh, to contact, uh, the regional director, Ed Goff. I contacted him both by phone and, and, uh, by a letter that we sent out. I believe it was a week later, I don't have the date on it, it wasn't immediately. Um, I did talk to him, uh, went over the situation, um, he said that they could do a study, I asked him without a tail. He said pretty much, uh, first and driving by. I said, well, can you please put that in writing? If you please, you know, do this study, whatever that consists of, and please put whatever your findings are in writing, and he said he would. And that was requested in the, uh, in the, uh, letter to him. So I went over everything specifically with him. The representative for the seniors, Renee Corey, um, stopped by, um, she was very happy with the letter, um, but then came back and wasn't so happy, didn't have a date, and it were, she was saying it didn't really, uh, it really wasn't correct what we're stating in there as far as blinking lights and everything. So she has also wrote a letter to him and makes, you know, further details of what they're looking for. So, uh, anyway, just wanted to follow up on that, we did follow up on that, we'll see what happens. Leave that to DOT. Next, I just wanted to point out, uh, there's a letter, um, that I think everyone, residents received from, uh, our, from our water waste, from our water supervisor, Greg Phillips. It's, uh, very comprehensive, that as everything, how the water gets to, to, uh, to the, so, from the source to, to your faucets, what to look for, has breakdown of all the, every chemical that's included and, and the whole report. So please, everyone, if you're interested in your water, and when it gets brown, and you wonder why, or whatever, I think it's pretty well explained there, and contact numbers on who you can call, um, and for, for more information. So, uh, I think Greg did a great job, as he always does, and I just wanted to point that out. I know that people, you know, every time that brown water starts coming, or you have some discoloration, you're, everyone freaks a bit. So, you know, take a look at this and try to understand it a bit. If it continues, give Greg a call, and, uh, he'd be happy to talk to you. The last thing I wanna talk about is the, uh, the, I think there's confusion with the CCA and the amount of, uh, and, and the amount of outreach that they have. Uh, I really don't think it's sufficient, um, and then to top off that, um, or add to the confusion, I got a letter, you know, I think other residents did, from another company, saying, hey, opt in for this, all you have to do, which I think is gonna even confuse it more. I think they need to have, there should be a press release, there should be something more in the paper, if you can.
I'll go to that.
Please tell them something has to be there, that, you know, you know, what this is all about, why it started. I mean, maybe something brief, something, and just really plain English. And, you know, this, I think the big thing is that people might think that they're not having Central Hudson anymore, or repairs or whatever wouldn't be done by Central Hudson. You know, I don't think anyone really, a lot of people don't understand this, where the source of, you know, Central Hudson's source comes from. That's what we're changing, and not, you know.
Right.
Not Central Hudson itself, so.
And they, we retain them.
What's that?
We retain them.
Yeah, exactly, I think that's important for, I think it's clear.
That's how it's always been, we just, no one ever knew it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
That's how Hudson does their business, anyway, so.
I know, there have been, uh, at least one phone call, and, you know, someone did.
The timing of that, those, those other mailings are not by accident, I'm sure, you know.
Yeah, well, it's definitely confusing. Uh, okay, um, next is a request to purchase a village property at fifteen Main Street. Julie's here, once again, but she walks around with this board, she's up there throwing arms by now.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, we've approached a few boards just to see, you know, what they would agree, so that we're not going back and forth. So, uh, the updated drawings that you have is a more simplified version, um, in terms of how much information is on the floor plan, but, uh, our client came back to us and said, you know, we've illustrated, um, on how this building could look with different types of porches and, um, or entries, stoop, minimal stairs, and she said, I look as if I'm paranoid to open a business on this, on this street. So she would like to propose a more, um, inviting situation, and, um, and so we've, um, we're, we were happy to find, you know, the ADA ramp that went up, as we discussed, that serves, you know, both the front and the back, um, uh, commercial spaces. What she would like to propose is a combined stair that serves both, you know, the covered area and the front entry, and then a continuation of a porch, uncovered porch that extends to the width of the existing building. So that there's a flow of space and some feeling of you're welcome here, you're not, you are not allowed to enter. Um, so that's what she would like to request.
What happened to the?
And, you know, we're willing to put any limitations, you know, because I know one of your concern is somebody will buy her property and build all the way up to the, you know, front line, and that's not her intention. She just wants inviting business atmosphere. And so, um, you know, we're, we're willing to consider any type of limitation that you wanna put on the deed or lease, you know, for a limited amount of time. Uh, she thinks she can live, you know, maybe twenty-five more years if we could have that, um, amount of time, you know, that'd be great.
That drawing really helps.
Thank you.
What happened to the parking places you had, um, was there a requirement for parking that you had, where you're now putting the ramp?
Um, the parking is negated, the parking, um, requirement was negated because we're doing two commercial space instead of full-time residents. So we, um, looked up the code and a definition of tourist home is a commercial, um, space. So, um, the back portion is now proposed as a tourist home, which is acceptable by the planning board and, um, the cafe. The footprint hasn't changed, the floor plant hasn't changed, it's just that now, you know, instead of full-time residents, she's happy to provide, she's happy to manage a part-time, short-term stay.
So it's gonna be like a B and B?
Yes, better breakfast, yeah.
Well, is a hotel near B and B, or?
It's not a hotel, because it's just a limited, you know, occupants, um, it's not multi-rooms.
The trailer's three roomed.
Okay. Julie, on the other side, there looks like there's a railing, um, or, I can't tell from here, that railing that's across the other half.
Yes.
Is that against the building, is that on the, on the front?
On the front.
That's a deck, and that's right up against the sidewalk.
Do you have a copy of the drawing?
I don't.
And what would the deck be used for?
Uh, just, um, she thinks that maybe she'll have a bench out there.
Like for dining?
Not necessarily. Let me, she's, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, probably so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not dining per se. It's just that people will just hang out there. I don't know if you, when you go to, say, Martha's Vineyard, there are these, like, little sandwich shops where there're just benches, you know, on the.
People sit out there and eat and drink and whatever.
Right, but it's a very short term. It's not like Hudson Hills dining, you know. It's just like a short term where they just perch and then move on, you know, to the park, kind of deal.
What's?
Oh, uh, my objection last time, as, as this time, is I don't think we should be selling village property, uh, for use. We were selling village stoops, which were a liability to the village, and we've done a number of those. I don't think we should be selling village property to businesses who could have the ability over time to expand their business.
That's why I'm saying we're definitely willing to, you know, um, go along with your limitations, you know, so that we address your, your concerns.
So, no benches, no chairs, no tables, no dining, no drinking, no perching, no fun.
But this is a business. I mean, I, I was hoping that the village will, you know, encourage healthy business, not, not limitations.
I, I do, but I want to still own village property. I think using it would be, like, my partner over there. What would I call him? My co-trustee? To, it, to encourage people to use property or to sell village property to be used to build on like that's not what we should be doing. You're gonna build something that's not conforming to all our codes right up against the sidewalk.
But it's uncovered deck. I mean, as far as zoning is concerned.
If you just wanna put stairs, for example, into the building, that would make sense to me, but I don't, uh, I don't think we should be doing that.
I kind of agree with that just because it's a narrow area. It's, it's gonna be more stuff that's right there at the sidewalk. On it, on, and we see the, the problem with, uh, just, you know, one, one other business down that has that. It's a similar thing where there's a small porch and now, and it's just people are gonna start going to the outside. They're gonna be in the sidewalk, no matter what you say or what we put on, in that.
And they're holding their, whatever it is that they bought inside and they're yakking, yakking, yakking. And it's, it's difficult to pass them by. And to be perfectly honest, I don't wanna really walk around by people. Not that she's going to be serving anything alcoholic, but I really don't like walking past groups of people that are standing on the sidewalk drinking alcoholic beverages. It's not what I think our main street is all about.
The next owners might be serving alcohol as well.
And I agree, Steve. I agree.
And as, as Steve said, you know, a set of stairs, because we realize you're raising the building, you're raising the site, a set of stairs to get in where people can, instead of putting that deck there, people will rather there if they have to wait outside, you know, rather than the, uh, deck.
So, then, how about this white stair? So then there's a connectivity from the ramp to the stair? Is that, is that acceptable?
I'm trying to see the, I mean, if.
But how wide is the, how wide is that landing gonna be on the top? That'll just be three feet or how deep, no, how deep?
How deep is that?
Going from the door to the first step.
About, uh, we, I don't have the dimensions over here, but I think it was about three foot six or, um, three foot six from the first, or four feet.
What's the total? Was seven, six or what was the total?
Right, the total is seven five, plus or minus, so seven five.
So, it's gotta be three, three to four feet.
So, it's, it's close to seven feet.
Yeah, and so it's, um.
From the front facade to the sidewalk is close to seven feet, right?
Seven, six.
That's what.
So, did that read like four feet?
Yeah, four feet, roughly four feet.
Actually, there's three steps, the top ones incorporated, or where did that drawing?
There you go. Give you a close-up.
And, and what that does is that creates a situation on the west side of doorway where tables and chairs underneath the, whatever, the shed roof.
But that's on her property. It's not on village property.
Right, but creating that, the wider area to that sets, sets up that as a very, that's a very accessible, very usable space for tables and chairs. Yes, it's on her property. And I'm just saying that the wider.
I mean, it's essentially a hallway. I mean, visually, we just wanted to feel open and connected. And so we just wanted that kind of connectivity flow of, of circulation.
But there's no way, it seems like the way the fence is, that there's no way to get from the ramp into the door. We have a fence that goes on the side of the stairs of the doorway. Is it open at the, at the door? Is it that or on the other?
Yes, there's a landing beyond that. Yeah, there's a.
And there's a side door into the cafe?
Yes, there's a side door here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we can get board approval to put steps that they need, but not necessarily for us to sell property. They can ask us to put steps.
Well, they already need steps. They have this if it comes down to that. I mean, the necessity is not there.
What is the, my, like, can I ask, what's the necessity of saving this building and not building new? Because it's not the greatest structure on earth.
Well, if we knock it down, then we have all kinds of trigger with the zoning variance because it is built to the lot line. And she, she can't afford to build all new, so she's trying to use what's there and build from there. She can't even afford to build a second story.
So, right now, the ramp is all on, on, on her property?
Yes. And couldn't you create an inviting entrance on the side?
But we, we have to provide access to the ramp?
Look, as you have there, you have the ramp, um, all the way to the west side. Couldn't you provide an inviting entrance to the east of the ramp?
Oh, you make this the main entry?
Yeah.
And don't have to, she's, I gotta have my front door. I can't have.
Okay, so, what about putting a front door there?
Front door on the side?
Yeah.
Yeah, how does that make sense?
Move your front door to the side. Just, and, and that's the front door. I'm not an architect, nor am I.
There's not enough turnaround space there for wheelchair.
No, no, keep your ramp, keep your ramp. So, so look at your bottom photograph, the bottom to the right. Where that white thing is, make that a doorway entrance. To the right of the, of that white thing is your ramp. And, and that white thing becomes your front door.
The ramp still stays here?
Yeah.
But our entry is here.
Yeah, yeah. You come in a, a door, and then you may go left and you go into a, but we're designing here and we shouldn't be designing.
She really wanted front door, a door that faces the street.
And I'm, okay, and, and I'm just suggesting that that white thing there could become a, a door that faces the street. But, but I'm designing, so.
But we'll have a little carve-out, like Veseyville, you mean?
And, well, she hears the, um, on the, on the other side, I'm sorry, I'm gonna tell you nuts. The steps going to the front door that you have on your other picture. And then the rest of the steps, to me, are useless because, uh, if you go up the ramp, uh, the ramp, and then you get up the ramp and you come around and there's an, there's an access door on the side there. So, that little sort of alcove that's on the side is just for people to hang out. Those steps in that, yeah, that area.
This, this is the access, this is the hallway.
It's got the ramp on it.
Yeah, I know where the ramp is, but where's the door for people in a wheelchair to go into the?
Right here, on the side.
So, right after that door, like, do we need all those steps in the front? No, not those steps, you need those.
Yes, we just want this to be, there to be a flow, so when, when somebody comes here, it doesn't become a trap. So, let's say somebody lands here, there's a, uh, more of a relief and circulation. Otherwise, it's a trap.
Uh, where, where do you wanna go on this? These thoughts?
Uh, I already, you know, expressed what I.
Which is?
That I don't think we should sell the property to build a porch up to the sidewalk. In terms of the changes, I mean, that's not really my, my business, you know.
You did mention stairs going the front, that area or no?
Well, that would make more sense to, to, from the village perspective. Instead of building on a village property, a large structure, you just have some stairs to access the building with, uh, perhaps, you know, smaller landing or something like that, but.
So, you'd consider selling the small area for?
Right, or allowing them to use it or, or whatever, uh, however it would work. I don't know how that.
I mean, this, this may sound, but you're, if we're selling village property, aren't we supposed to go off the bids on that? Isn't that supposed to be a market price?
Nah, I don't think in this situation would be, I think there'd be much of a market for it.
Usually when we sell village property, isn't there supposed to be market?
Cause it wouldn't be a stoop, I understand.
It's a stoop, so it's, it's.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
We could talk about what the price would be for a smaller piece.
I mean, I'm fine with, as Steve said, just putting the stairs and not necessarily even selling it, just allowing steps on them.
That would come away from everything we're trying to do with stoops and liability, you know. I definitely don't have a liability about stairs.
I don't know how we would do that.
Well, we sold, we sold enough area on, for, um, Sukhasi and for her stairs to come down.
Yeah.
Out to property.
Yeah. I thought there was another establishment that bought the sidewalk for outdoor seating. Wasn't it Riverview or, um?
Definitely Riverview.
No, I thought there was another establishment that purchased sidewalk for outdoor seating.
Stoops, stoops, existing stoops, all.
You know, like in front of.
Stoops that exist already. Which were a liability. So.
Lynn, thoughts? I think the option is, one, we don't sell it all, or, two, we limit the area we sell to, to, it could be just the entranceway, which is the rail, first rail to the left, to the middle rail. That's an entrance that goes there, or maybe a little wider, but not the other area, or you sell, well, the whole thing. Or you sell the, the stair area. I mean, you can sell any part of it if you want to. If, if the thing is, we don't want people hanging out there or whatever, if we eliminate the, the area to the left, you know, the deck to the left, uh, to the east, that, that would eliminate that.
I think there's a life safety issue at hand here if we're creating a trap. I would much prefer people to get out instead of creating a, a trap that's more than fifty percent of.
That's, that's your, that's your expertise.
Yes, and so then I would, I would, um, respectfully request to purchase this portion then.
But it's not necessary.
Can you move the ADA ramp against the building on the other side?
No, because then I can't get in here.
Yeah.
So, um, you didn't ask me, but my.
No, I'm sorry, I was studying too.
Of the three options, no, everything or a minimum amount, I go with the minimal amount. Would, I would prefer not to sell anything, but if necessary, I would sell only that portion of the property that permits an entrance to the front door. And, and not extend it to, into the artwork area.
I just think the one, one picture that's not missing that might be helpful too is if there was no door there and what that would look like. Cause I don't think that, that, you know, is the character of the village at all without a door on the front. I mean, if the door's on the side and there's just a window there or nothing on the front, that would, to me, not be, I would have to agree, not inviting.
I agree with that.
Or not in character with anything else. I mean, everything has front doors on it. I mean, in other buildings have, have stairs going up to their buildings, like, in that area too. Right next door is a porch with stairs going up to the building, so.
Well, if all there were were stairs and you moved them back against the building, those same stairs could exist the width that you have there. It's just that one stair goes out to the wheelchair ramp and the other stairs go into the building, like, you could have that same.
I'm sorry, push this further? Is that what you said?
Well, no, the, the depth from the top step to the front of the building goes all the way to the building. So, the top step, you enter into the building through the walking door, but also that stair exists so you can walk onto the wheelchair ramp as well, so that you don't, so you still have your flow. You could go out the wheelchair door and go down the stairs, or go down the ramp, or you could go out the front door and go down the stairs. So, that's a, you know, just to, cause you want that consistency you said in the, uh, in the flow there. So that you don't have to have a five-foot landing and stairs, uh, in front of the building.
But right now, it's, it's just four foot and maybe a couple of inches at most here, yeah.
I'm just guessing.
I, I just don't want it to be uncomfortably crowded here. I mean, obviously, you can step aside, but it's, you gotta have at least.
Yeah, to rise up.
Commercial, commercial landing, not a residential landing. So, it'd be great if we can have this so that it's not a, a death trap, I quote-unquote, death trap. I just don't want people to come in and just feel that they're trapped there.
I, I, I don't, I don't see that.
I don't see it either.
I mean, you could out-of-gate there if you wanted to. It's not a death trap. It's like.
And, and what is, I shouldn't ask the question, cause it really doesn't matter, but you got a second entrance there, which I don't understand why it's necessary, the second entrance on the side.
For ADA access, for the ADA access.
I thought you said that that was in the back.
That is this, the other tenant, the second commercial tenant. This is the ADA access to the front tenant.
Okay, so, so you have railings that prevent the ADA people from falling off. They go up, they turn around, and they go in.
Yes, but this, then, the people on a wheelchair, there's no need for them to come here. They just will go into that.
Right, there's no need for them to go up the stairs. There's no need for stairs that.
Helps anybody who is going in the background to get, that has come up this way.
Don't take the ramp.
I, I think the consensus, um, to give out is that to sell the minimum, so the, uh, front door entrance, um, and, and not the, uh, not the deck area to the left and not the deck area to the right. So, it would be stairs going to the entrance. Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Would you like to okay that now, or we'll get dimensions on that and get a drawing on that, or just a rough drawing, or?
I can give you the dimensions, yeah.
Or maybe meet and bounds or something.
Yeah, to get a show, so, yeah.
Yeah, so in concept.
Yeah, and what you would need.
You're willing to just, you know, provide this information.
Exactly.
So, then, that's it for me?
I think so, yeah. If you just talked to Jeff, I mean, if we get the, uh, the measures and the meet and bounds, uh, that's all we need. We can give you what Jeff can figure out with that cost, and then we'd approve that, you know, we approve that size at the next, whatever meeting you get that information to us by.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Next, the request for a photo shoot. Uh, this was fairly easy one. Um, it's a van, a car, ten people. They're very interested. They're willing to pay the, to expedite the process, which is another three hundred fifty. They're willing to pay the application fee, which is a thousand, so, um, it's for, what's the date on it?
June fifth.
June fifth, so, I make a motion to approve the shoot.
A second?
Excellent.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn.
Getting easier, see?
Uh, approval of bills, batch, uh, five-one-three-oh?
Yes, for a total amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-two cents.
And you're making a motion?
And I am making a motion to approve, batch number fifty-one-thirty, for that amount.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes, uh, let's see, all right. Approval of minutes, trustees workshop, five-seven-nineteen. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything else from the board?
No.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. With, with friends, couple.
All in favor?
Aye.